So Pam will start.
Pam will start the meeting.
All lines are on you. Seven o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I've never done this, so.
Okay, do you?
They make them, they just hand on the handle?
Well, so Pam's gonna have to spray your handle. I'll get Pam a draw.
Are we doing Pam first, or do we do them all at once?
If, you might want to do them separately, just so Brittany can hear. Unless Brittany can hear fine, then you can do them both together.
Can you hear us, Brittany?
Yep, I can hear you.
So do the two council members?
I would, yeah.
But should I do him first?
Usually, usually they would do the mayor first, and then he would do the council member.
So City Clerk starts everybody in.
We're gonna do you first.
The mayor's more, I mean, City Clerk's right on the video.
Yeah, the City Clerk starts the one.
So, have him raise his hand. Raise your hand. Doesn't matter which one. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
Of the city of Beesaw, according to the best of my ability.
Of the city of Beesaw, according to the best of my ability.
On this day, January 11, 2024.
He doesn't actually say that part.
Yeah. There it goes.
Yeah, you sign that.
Okay, so I give you Brittany and Pam together.
We're gonna do the same thing together, yeah, so they would just repeat after you just said.
Alright, Brittany, you have to repeat after me, okay?
Okay.
We're gonna do you and Pam together.
Okay.
I.
I'm Brittany Green.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of council. Duties of council.
Goodness. Of the city of Beesaw.
Of the city of Beesaw.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
On January 11, 2024. And Kay just walked in.
Better days than ever.
It has like, what?
Well, you were appointed, so what did we sworn up?
I was appointed.
You signed a paper.
Garrett, now that's just something reselling.
Of course you don't put your resume on.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't. I did it on the agenda, I'm sorry.
So we have to read?
So we, next by the vote.
Take a present?
Take a new council president.
Okay.
There you go.
You gave me too comfortable, remind me.
Do you wanna stay on the board or do you want to go?
Um, I need to stand up.
Okay.
All right, camera dill, I don't care what you say.
Well.
Say it like you will, when you record that.
I'm not there anymore. That's what I say, I prefer the video.
And then I need you guys to do this one, two, right?
They don't have to, you've already done the other ones, you have to sign that.
Just sign that.
January 11.
War.
I guess war made.
You swore it, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. And should I have Pam sign these?
Yeah, I'll sign them.
Is it mandatory?
Yeah. You just swore it.
So. Yeah. This is weird. I don't know. Hey, so now you run the meeting from here. So you plot your agenda. And you're gonna go one by one, we're on proving the minutes. So the minutes are in your stack. And everybody can look at them and read them. And then I should let Garrett tell you what to do, because.
You do it on it.
I don't, no, 100% but.
I'll correct you if things are wrong, you're good.
You'll look at the minutes. Somebody will make a motion.
I second it.
And then you ask if they all approve, or who approves, or whatever.
All in two.
I approve.
These are all numbers for?
Last month. These are last month's bills, they have to go in the minutes. And then the minutes from last month's meeting. And the next item is bills for January. So that's on the next page. And it's the same process. Somebody can motion.
I motion to approve the bills for January. To pay the bills, excuse me.
I second it.
All in favor.
Are you here, supposed to say all in?
I approve.
All in favor then? Okay.
Okay.
Good, great.
So the next item is Marilyn, she is not here. But, uh. Can we talk about anything, she's not here?
I mean, if you knows what else.
Well, I drove by today, and clearly they're still in the camper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is she gonna come in in hardship or something, or?
I think that that's what they were gonna say, and they were gonna try to work on cleaning out a house. So.
Well, some of that guy's still in his trailer, he was, I think he moved.
Yeah, he's gone.
Because I suddenly moved, I'm like, really? That's not that sneaky.
He's kind of migrating around, but it's all like.
Yeah.
He'll get it figured out.
I'd probably just move to next one's agenda, maybe do visible, I see, I mean.
And that.
In this time of year, obviously, you're not gonna wanna do anything that's, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal right now. I mean, it should have been dealt with before, if it was a problem, but.
Well, I can go visit, but I don't go hard times right now.
They need somewhere to live, I don't really, I have no problem with it.
So you're just kinda awkward right there?
Yeah, it's not that big a deal right now.
I wouldn't wanna be in his trailer right now, personally, but.
No.
I'd be pretty sure.
It's very nice.
I know. It's terrible out there.
So, Mike Harris, he's been working for the city of Beesaw for quite some time.
How many years?
It's been a while since.
So since Larry, since Larry got in, he has had no pay raises. Not zero.
I don't want, the first year.
The first year.
A year across.
About 2% the first year.
So, we, we've talked about that, and we feel like Guy should, should be more than what he's at, because of his loyal service for the most part. Uh, he is talking about retiring, and he has found somebody that would take his place, I suppose. And so, how you guys feel about giving him a little bit of a raise for the time that he served? And what, what we're kinda talking about is, he's missed up, missed out on a 3% every year since that one year after Larry was in. So he's making, what is it?
Seventeen fifty.
Seventeen fifty. And 3% for the last seven years puts it at like 21, she knows, but I feel like that's pretty.
Uh, puts it at 2263 is where he should be, had he gotten all of those. Which I mean, it's not a huge difference in his paycheck monthly, but it is a little gratitude. His job isn't the most glamorous.
I don't know how many you wanna jump in the truck or pile streets this time.
Or in a sewer manhole, clean out.
Cleaning out sewer manholes, things like that.
You know, that's been a dream of mine, even.
We're not, we're not trying to always do it, but I think it's, it's fair. If you, if you had a job that you received no increase of pay for eight, seven years, I think you probably still wouldn't be here. So. Anyways. So, something that kinda made me, made me think about that is, my 16-year-old son started, starting wages at $16. 16-year-old, set fire shop.
For no skills.
Sandblasting, $16.
And he's now, he just got promoted, and will be at $20 an hour.
So what we, so do we say?
Our son, he's in the water department in Blackfoot, he started, I wanna say 20, or just shy of 20. But he's now at 23, he's been there for three years, two, three years.
So do we just do like, I motion to increase Guy to?
Well, I think you have to pick a number, like, I feel between the 22 to 25 is fair.
There's also something else that each council member here gets first, pretend, and he's never been.
Yeah, that's something that I don't appreciate.
So, I think it would be, uh, kind of right to do. He's not gonna be much longer.
Is there, I've, I've talked to Robin about this, full disclosure, why doesn't Guy get Percy?
I don't know, I think it's just.
Does anybody here know?
They told him it was because he was part-time, but I'm like, our hours are pretty much similar.
Yeah, that doesn't point me, have we looked into whether or not he can get it?
If I can do that, why couldn't he?
Well, that makes perfect sense, I hadn't thought about that.
As a part-time employee, you can't get that, only as a full-time employee.
I think it's due to 20 or 25 hours, it's a special. That's why I was so originally.
I know, at school, I didn't get Percy till I became full-time.
And some of those are like employer's rules.
Sure, yeah, because you don't have to offer retirement, but subsidy costs way too many, but.
But you have to be five years vested, he's not gonna be around for five more years.
I see, just make the adjustment on the age, and I think that's all that can be done.
How about, I don't see. But, see, there's ways around that, because if he just became a city council member again, he would be vested.
But he would have to like get elected, maybe people don't like him anymore.
I agree, I agree.
He just, I mean.
There's no way to wrap, I could be doing this, I can't remember enough about Percy when I was on it.
Yeah, I know you can't do a virtual act, you're not on a Percy expert either, certainly not.
Well, and when you were in before as a councilman, we probably weren't getting Percy at that time.
Nope, there wasn't no such thing at that time.
I don't really.
It came in after I was.
I became there.
Yeah, unless he wants to run for city council, there's no way he's gonna get vested for that.
So, I think, make an adjustment on his wage, if you guys are okay with that.
So what do we think of when Guy, and I think just say this about Guy, but when Guy retires, and offering it to Brian? Percy or Brian?
I think Beesaw has room for more of a full-time, starting in the spring, I think. So, there's a lot to do, and I think that.
Would we be okay with that?
I think financially, the, the city would be okay.
At times, my job requires me to be here an awful lot, there's other times when it does, or other times when I'm really, really active in town.
So there's a lot to do, uh, I think, and so.
So, I'm sorry.
So I, I've kinda thought of a few things that we could do in the next four years around Beesaw to help improve the area. And I think for the city maintenance person would be involved with a lot of that, and so I'd like to present this to you guys, and then you can think about it, we can talk about it.
Well, before you do that, we should go and make a decision, all right?
I took a stuff.
It's okay, let's.
Stay on topic, guys.
So we give you a key card.
It's all kind of the same topic.
So how do you, how do you feel about guys?
I am fine with giving him a wage, what we think that a good wage is, I have no idea for this guy.
So, on average, okay, so here's just, I took his average hours, um, and what he puts in, and at his old wage is like 1050, at $25 an hour, it would be 1500. That's what I'm saying, it's not like this huge amount difference.
$15 an hour?
No, 1750 to 25, did I say 15?
I'm sorry, what was the 15?
So it's $1,200 to?
Oh, 1500.
Sorry, sorry.
Just like on his.
It's a 3, it's a $300 difference.
Yeah.
Do it 25.
Yeah.
So, and I have to factor by training comp layer, um, Brian. When he gets hired, we keep him at the same wage, correct?
We will start him at an agreed wage, and then part of Brian's, um, I think his wage increases will be asked, we would like to send him to, um.
Certification.
Certification, sort of.
So he went down a, sort of a little bit lower, but we're working out that.
Yes, yes.
I.
Because he has to learn all the things, but we want to send him to do, uh.
Training in like water and sewer.
Yeah.
And then he could be full-time, like testing the water.
So right now, Beesaw pays an outsourced $400 a month to test the Beesaw water. And so I think it's resourceful for Beesaw to just go ahead and send one of their own employees, get the certification, it'll take a little time, and part of the.
I can take this home?
Part of looking for an employee is looking for somebody that's gonna be around for 10 or 15 years. And they can be long-term, and they can go through and be that guy, so as he's, as he receives the certifications, I think that his wage can increase, I mean, we're already paying out $400.
And he's okay with getting all these certificates?
There he is.
Yes.
They'll work out.
I think that'll do it.
Yeah.
And, and he mentioned too, that Earth is kinda interested in that also.
Yes.
So, it could be beneficial to him in the future.
Okay.
I think it's good for just a, a person in the city of Beesaw to have that. So, it, it'd probably benefit him, and it'd make benefit for the also.
So going back to Guy's wages, I'm fine with 25, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that's just my opinion.
It's fair.
Does Brittany have anything to say, except she's not here, we can't see her?
Oh, yeah.
I forgot, she was there, so I saw it from.
You already forgot about me.
All this premium, like.
I'm good with whatever, I think, yeah, I think he deserves a race for sure.
Okay.
So I am due to approve that we give Guy a raise to $200 now.
And you have to say all in?
All in.
Well, we'll post it to her.
So as far as.
She had the kitchen screened.
Uh, as far as Brian, uh, Guy actually was the one that went through and had thought about it, dealt with Larry a little bit. And it, and he just lives here at Beesaw, so he's excited about it, he wants to do it. He's looking at it as the long haul, not a summer job. Uh, I think in the spring, uh, we'll be able to keep him busy, do a lot of different things. So there's a lot of improvements that need to be made in Beesaw. So, what I, what I kinda see, what I see is Beesaw, uh, is like an older town, and I guess people just kinda don't, it, it's kinda gone like this, I think, just lots of jump around. I'm not suggesting anybody can have yard, but, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that can be approved, because they haven't been done for quite some time. So, uh, there's a few things I'd like to suggest that you guys can think about.
I think we should thank the fire hydrants.
We talked to them about not testing those every year.
So all fire arrangements have not been tested or certified for some time.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to do that. And so, there's a whole long list that needs to do.
That's a little scary.
It is, especially if your house is on fire.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause I just lived next to him, I guess I'm not, you know, they're milling water out of the ditch.
So, part of Brian's thing is, is we want the, the city of Beesaw wants to hire him as part-time to train with Guy. And get started, and has a part-time, and then in the spring, we'll move it forward after that.
So who's it, the white coast, you know, or you think so?
So can I ask a question real quick?
No.
Is this, is that fairly?
No, you can't.
Can I?
No, no.
So in the wintertime? How did, how did, yeah. I'm just gonna talk. In the wintertime, would that go back down to part-time? If we have a low snow year?
Yeah.
So everything.
I think that there's things, you know, we were talking about this, like, there's a whole bunch of insulation in the shop sitting over there, so it needs to be put in.
Putting on other projects that.
So, so all, all those are gonna talk about a few.
Yeah, I feel like that would be fair.
At one time, we were gonna wind the inside air shaft, and got this, which is.
No, no.
We would have to find things for the table, and I'd rather do that than have him go part-time.
And I would hate to see him quit a full-time job, and then it doesn't stand out.
I guess that's where I was heading.
Yeah.
Trying to keep it, I mean, I don't know, I have no clue, I'll be honest, I don't know, but I think, if we hire him full-time, we should leave him full-time, because people need to make the.
I guess you may talk now about some of your ideas.
Well, one of the things you may wanna consider is obviously just boot up the salary. Because, you know, you're gonna have them flow, and you, you know, and so as you manage that kind of thing.
I like that idea.
You know, because, um, some weeks, you know, he might be 60 hours, and some might be 20.
How do you feel about working for salary?
If it's fair?
If it's fair, I, I understand.
That's, and I think that's something you can work into, I'm not saying you gotta make that decision at night, but I think that would be the direction.
No, I really like that, that's really smart, because you're right, there's gonna be times when it's more peak hours.
There are times when we're gonna need a bunch of stuff, like when we start doing road maintenance, or something like that. If, if we had somebody here to help and run up and pick up asphalt with the other person sitting there working it down, and working the roller machine, and bringing in more asphalt to fix it.
Okay, when you were maintenance, was there full-time or part-time?
Part-time.
You were part-time.
Everything's.
Okay, one, one of the things to consider, alright, so, full-time, standard, full-time calculating hours is 2,080 hours a year. So basically, you feel, whatever you're gonna start hitting at, multiply it by that, that much, and that would be the, the annual salary.
Yeah.
And then you, then you could just, you could calculate the raises off the, as you're increasing by hour, you buy that, uh, 2,080.
Yeah, we'll get there, and we'll get there.
So that, make sure you're covered.
Yeah.
So I, I guess, so we just vote and say we approve?
Do, do we need a motion, and all?
You might as well, so I mean technically, this would be under the mayor's authority, but you guys are so small, that, you know, I would be the motion to approve, and and so your, your thing, I mean, your culture's just a little bit different than like Blackfoot, for example.
I think it's tough, everybody's.
Because you're so small, I do too. Like, in a town like Blackfoot, you can't, I mean, you can't go everywhere, you have to issue the council, because there's just too many of them. You know, but you guys are small enough, and I think it's wise to have it in front of all of you.
So we'll go through the city budget, also make sure there's money available for that payroll, so that, you know, there's no surprises, like, oh, where's this money, kind of, we'll figure it all out, and get that spread away. Make sure it's coming from the right places.
Excellent.
So, yes, Laura, you just do a motion to hire Brian as part-time?
I do a motion to hire Brian Johnson as a new part-time employee.
I second it.
All in favor?
All in favor? Everybody?
Wow.
Done.
I just had to read two sets of keys.
Did you fill on his weight?
It was quick.
Well, you know Larry threw the keys at me last year.
He's like.
I find, I find it's, it's proven that it's, I'm gonna have two sets, because almost all the doors lock behind you, and sometimes you go in, you walk out, and you lack your keys. So if you got another set at home, you go back and retrieve it.
Keep in mind, this is also Guy we're talking about, he loses things.
It's all good.
Okay, next. I don't, oh. Let's go, next item.
The hog ordinance? I don't think there's been any problems. I don't know, what do you guys think?
But last meeting.
I know. So there was some problems.
We wanted to talk about terms.
And one thing that's developed since the last meeting, I don't, to me, it's not an issue, but, um, remember Deputy Johnson's here, and they're having a fight on this meeting, it's just too much work, blah, blah, blah.
You know, it's funny, is they're paid to do that.
Uh, exactly, but, um, anyway, he went back and visited with the sheriff, and they, they can't find the MLU we had done several years ago, that they would enforce your orders, and things like that. They've asked us to redo that. I've, you know, it's one of those where I think it's still binding on the sheriff's department, but if it makes the new sheriff happy, because we did that under Sheriff Rowland, we'll just, we'll redo it, we'll redo the date, so I will be bringing that back to you next month. Um, so I wanted to bring that up, so you can have that on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, because that's, then they, they can't find it, I, I think is the problem, but it's, it's easy enough to redo.
Okay.
Um, but, and if we, if you end up having problems, you know, if I do a visit with the sheriff, can, but they, you know, obviously they should be enforcing. Now, but, something to keep in mind, and I don't wanna bring this up last month, because, I mean, anyway, it's probably had. The risky part is, we always want them more to enforce state co-ordinances than you do city. Because if somebody has a medical problem, and they're in jail, you know, I mean, a slim event that that might happen. If it's a city co-ord, and they're in jail for, um, it's your responsibility to pay the medical bills. If they're in jail on a state co-validation, the county has to cover that. Slim risk, and in Blackfoot, I've had people that put in jail on minimum maintenance ordinances, you know, where they keep their yards up or something, because it couldn't get their attention. Well, it's always really scary, because most of the time, on an oxygen tank, and, you know, you're like, no, crap, I mean, I put them in for a weekend, and, you know, something happens. Well, we've never had that since I've been there, but a roadie issue came up here over the last two weeks in Blackfoot. And back in 1993, the city ended up transferring some ground to the county, to reimburse them for a medical bill that had been incurred, so it does happen.
Oh.
You know, and for you guys' pleasure, that would be devastating. So anyways, just something to keep in mind, you don't necessarily wanna force the state or city conditions sometimes.
So, okay, with that.
Well, so you need to have them, but, you know, when if somebody gets cited with them, then this, you know, obviously it's an education and an attention getter, hopefully. And, but you don't wanna push those real hard sometimes. It's something that keep you back.
So, so something else that, uh, I was talking to Brian at Anver, and a while ago, they digitalized their city ordinances. Instead of getting a piece of paper and trying to fumble through all the books, they paid somebody, I think at the time, which was recently, I think $900. And they put it all online, you can go right on, get into the ordinance. and they put it all online. You can go right on, get into the ordinance.
Well, first you'd have to have a doc up.
Yeah, so all that's gonna be set up, so, uh, that would be something to look forward to, I think, instead of the books that take hours to go through to try to figure out one little thing.
And I do have, Rex, it's helpful for you, um, quite some time ago, I put together, and I haven't updated it in a while, but about two-thirds of your ordinance book is your budgets, which obviously are meaningless to you.
I am working on going through that and spinning it up.
Well, so I have a summary, the kind of the important ones, um, that I can email to you if you have a rag or.
Yeah.
Um, and it just, more of your ones that you're gonna need to enforce, you know, because we went through and obviously all your, you have to weigh through all your budget ordinances, you know, so those are, I assume, pretty irrelevant to anything you're doing now.
Well, it's like, uh, on the corner down here, somebody bought the house and they were asking about certain things and ordinances and I think they were, they had a misunderstanding or something, but it's kind of difficult, I think, to try to do all that in the paper, but if it was just online, just go right in and figure it out and you'd see exactly what it is. It's very clear. Anybody can do it. They don't have to come in here and do it. So I think that'd be good.
Okay, so do we need to define terms for the dog stuff? Your opinion was, I wouldn't worry about it.
I, you know, until you have a problem, I mean, the thing is, we don't want to pass laws just to pass laws. You kind of have to, you know, there's some things you might see and you want to be proactive, certainly, but if things are rolling along pretty good, I don't know that I would change something to change you.
And the state Idaho does have a law that says we can shoot the dogs in city.
Yeah.
If it's attacking your stuff, yeah.
Yeah, if it attacks my cats, I can shoot it.
You can defend, but, so anyway, it's, you know, I wouldn't legislate this to legislate, but if you see something that you need to deal with, certainly, it will even then whatever.
Uh, I guess that's up to the council.
I don't think we need to redefine it because there is a state law that basically overrides anything we pass anyway. Because it says we can't pass a law that's gonna go against what the states are regarding.
Yeah. Bradine, did you hear all that?
Yes, I did.
And what's your?
I agree. If it, if it doesn't, I mean, if there's no point in, in anything else, you know, but if it's just gonna be overridden, I guess, this.
Yeah.
Well, the, the situation with Kit and his dogs, I think, has calmed down. I think they, I think they kind of got it under control.
Unless you're his neighbor.
At times it is, but sometimes it's still under control.
Well, we'll keep trying.
Okay.
We've got several new issues with dogs. We've got quite a few different patches of dogs that are running loose that I'm gonna go inform the people that they've got to start doing something about them.
Yeah, I see a couple of them coming through sometimes.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go start telling them I've got some traps out. They get my traps, they're going to jail, but I got snares on my own property.
Yeah, that's okay.
They get my snares, they're dead animals.
Yep.
Question for Gary. Does Idaho have a felony child endangerment law?
In what respect? I mean, certainly they do, yes.
Actions by a person or under, you know, animals under control of that person endangering a.
So they would be charged with. So they have their animal control statutes, just like, you know, your citizen, they've got the vicious dogs and all that, yeah.
So basically, if, like, a dog attacks a child again, the owner can be charged with felony under the state law.
And whether it's a felony, uh, second offense, I'd have to look at that. Most of those are misdemeanors.
Alright.
I don't, uh, I don't believe that goes into the felony range.
Alright, because I just want to think that I know that they did, they did in Comifonia. They need, if any animal attacks a child, it's a, it's felony child endangerment, it's the highest level. That, if they give them that, so they can plead it down to the person.
I don't, my recollection on our animal control statutes, uh, was they were misdemeanors.
Yeah. Uh, so they didn't, they didn't under, I mean, do as a animal control, they just did it as a child endangerment law.
Yeah, and I don't believe it's sort of the, I don't think there's anything there under our child, you know, injury to child things.
Yeah.
I mean, there are injury to child statutes as well. If you, you do anything and place a child at risk.
Yeah, that's what they used.
Um, but I don't believe that's a felony. Um, I don't, or the animal control statutes, I think those are all misdemeanors.
Alright.
Um, I wouldn't swear by that, but I'm pretty sure.
So that'd be a nice easter hole to plug, plug, okay?
Alright, we'll move forward. Utility billing possible rate increase. What do you guys think? You think it should be increased?
Yeah.
Does anybody have a clue where it's at?
No.
No clue. Nobody has no clue about that. So what I'm, uh, when Larry was in, he come over this fall and I said, hey, we're talking about the water and I says, you, you don't even know if you're making any money or you're losing money. You have no clue. And odds are, you're probably losing money. Same thing with the garbage issue. We just had an increase on the garbage.
Yeah, and that was, so I copied the new bill and it just went up again. So you're not covering your base anymore on garbage.
So as far as like the water goes, uh, the city does not know if it's going backwards in the billing or forward. So what I'm going to suggest is that we, uh, pick multiple houses, read the meter, uh, on a quarterly basis, figure out where we're at, what's being consumed, and if we're, where we're at and get a baseline somewhere.
I know that, as I said, you can't like profit a bunch of money on utilities.
Well, you have to cover your expenses and you can have a reasonable reserve.
Okay, so what's a reasonable reserve? That's my question.
Well, that's, that's a great area, right? Obviously, if you're, you know, if your budget's a hundred thousand a year, you can't have a million in reserve. That's too much. I mean, you know, I think most of your auditors will tell you, you're gonna want to have six months to twelve months of expenses in the savings.
Okay.
Um, you know, that'd be a good question with Woodfly doing your audit right now, of where they feel like your reserves are and where you should be shooting for.
I think that's what we're doing.
So I made a chart, though, today for last year's, last fiscal year's, water revenue collected and expenses and sewer revenue collected and expenses. And in my head, I had kind of thought water was tight because it is our lowest funded account. There's not a lot sitting there. But surprisingly, sewer was in a pretty good deficit.
There's a pretty big hole in that sewer.
So, I mean, you've got a garbage increase and then there's these.
So are you saying these five hundred would be, would we bring in ninety-one?
That was the, yeah, I went through and figured that out.
And you're not, and you're not combining those, right?
No.
Okay, these, these all suck.
It was separate and I, I took out, like, you know, like, we'd make all the deposits into water and then disperse, right? So I took all that out. So this is just water funds that stick there. This is just sewer funds that get put in there. And then there are expenses that came out.
Something, something that triggered this is when she first came in, the garbage bill was like very, 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 very.
Yeah, like, you're collecting like fifteen hundred, but the bill was.
A lot more, like double that. So that causes one to think, well, where's everything else at? How's this being controlled? How's it being, is it fair? Is the city, the city doesn't need to make a lot of money, but it needs to cover this.
Well, legally, they can't make a lot of money.
Right, it's gotta cover its expenses plus just a little bit to help with their.
You know, with water, I know one of the expenses that we're looking at is new meters. Do we have an idea?
We need, we need two new meters and them are about seven thousand bucks a piece or something like that. At the, at the, at the two little houses.
So we'll, we'll figure this out. Are they dysfunctional at the moment or they're just?
Well, they're still, they're still working, but that one works, but it doesn't, it doesn't send out, but that one works and everything's working fine and it reads it here. But the state of Idaho gave us, when they originally read it, they gave us.
Ten years.
Ten years, and that's about ten years ago.
Eight years into it.
Yeah, okay.
Are we still?
That's why you told me.
Are we still in that grant under, are we still paying for that?
Yeah.
No.
Yes, that grant's been paid off.
No, for the water or the water?
No, it's not been paid off.
It's paid on. It's not paid off. Um, so my question, but I don't know, is I thought I remembered you saying one time that you can raise a bill within a cost of living amount.
Five percent.
Five percent.
If you're less than five percent, you still have to do city council action on that. But if it's over five percent, you have to publish and have a policy here.
Okay, that's what I thought.
How often can we raise it by that?
I think.
Every as often as you would do.
I think every, I think we need to figure out where we're at and get that baseline and then do that increase once a year. I think that's pretty regular.
Well, I feel like my suggestion would be at least do a cost of living raise this year. Where, see where the numbers are at.
It's a good time to have the conversation because you're gonna be getting your audit back here the next month or so. This doesn't, I usually come in February, March with you guys.
So last, wasn't it last month that was, or last year, it was August?
Is she that late?
She was here that night we did the budget hearing.
Okay, I was thinking, like, I hope you know that for you guys.
She did say she has a good chunk of it done, but.
Anyway, if, if they're done, it'd be a great time to be talking about it because they know that.
But it was only like two, two months ago, maybe three that, that audit was done.
August, it was August.
Well, but that would've been your twenty-two audit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and this was that fiscal year, like, this is the twenty-two to twenty-three. Oh, yeah, but, yeah.
August, two fiscal years.
This one will be a bit.
The fiscal year ends in G, right?
Yeah.
No, it begins in September.
We can, we can figure it out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm taking.
Yeah, another one.
Can I ask a specific question?
Yeah.
Because I made all of this. How is our, our budgets formed? So we're in a hole in the sewer, but are we in excess in water? Also.
Yeah, so there's a water fund, there's a sewer fund, there's a general fund.
But how did, so my bill is a hundred bucks a month, but how do you pick my hundred? Can you, can you adjust those?
So each, there's a rate for water, there's a rate for sewer, rate for garbage, right? So you can mess with just water and increase there, your sewer alone, or whatever, um.
And in theory, if your water was good on your reserve, you actually could reduce water and, you know, so you could.
That, that's what I'm asking. Can, can you?
Yeah, but right now, our water fund is pretty low.
So they're all, all of our funds, all on oversize.
Sewer actually, like, this is why this surprised me because sewer actually looks fairly good on the farm.
Okay, I had it backwards, sorry. So sewer can, see, in theory, you could reduce sewer and raise water.
Yeah.
But, but what else are we looking? But some are trying to take and put a little building out of there.
Uh-huh.
And so that's gonna cost a few bucks. So it's a building and move our generator over there and hook it up with a permanent on. It's gonna cost a little for electricians and hook it up to stuff. So it's on demand on.
Right.
Uh, I was just curious if, if rather than the cost of living, if you could adjust how you're taking the monthly.
Like, leave the number the same, but adjust.
Yeah, adjust what the money goes to. So instead of fifteen dollars a month for garbage, it's twenty dollars a month, but you're taking another five dollars out of sewer.
I think when we, we, once we do all this, she'll probably just have to put that in writing and mail it to everybody so they can say, see, like, you know, so, so there's an explanation.
It's like, I don't want my bill to go up either.
Yeah, well, and I'm not a close.
I'm sure my bill doesn't.
I don't want it to go up either and I, but I know that.
The only unknown I know of in this is at times when we had like that lightning strike a few years ago and have a pretty new, um, parts of our skating unit. And then when it took out our, our VFD drive on that one building over there, and that was a twenty, eighteen, twenty thousand dollar VFD drive. And so then things happened unbeknownst to us. All of a sudden, we have, we have to have something to be able to follow up to.
And that's the, that's the reason we're reserves, but bring it in the account.
Yeah, but like even the savings is pretty low for water.
Well, it kind of sounds like, you know, you, we don't know what the water is. The water may be in the hole as well.
Well, according to the numbers, it's not in the hole. It was actually up fourteen hundred dollars. And.
That's pretty small.
Sewer was in the hole seventeen thousand, which surprised me.
Yeah, and the thing is, I mean, you said, you said the, the sewer, I mean.
But I think part of that was sending it to her.
Oh, that was?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we were ten thousand dollars there, didn't we?
I think fourteen by the time three months were paid.
And you said sewer, that's where the trash went up?
Yeah, and the trash just went up this month and.
How much?
We had no notice.
You ever have cancer, figure that out?
So it was sixteen eighty or something like that before. I mean, the whole bill was like twenty-four seventy-eight, what was last month's, yeah. Yeah, so that's what we get charged every month, twenty-four seventy-eight, and now it's twenty-six seventy-six.
Yeah, so that's gonna be another increase to.
So that has to be covered.
Yeah. You might as well let everybody know that, hey, they just increased our bill, so we got, you know, it goes out.
And everybody, everybody's goes up, so. It'll go out in writing, so.
Yes.
It's, you, you, you're not gonna just get a bill and be like, oh.
Yeah.
The big explanation. It's a small community. It's not that big deal. We'll, we'll, we'll inform everybody.
We have to pass it on to them, our citizens. We don't have a choice.
I mean, everything's going up. You know, your electric is going up, gas going up, fuel's going up.
We've got to help support.
Parks is growing up.
Parks, yeah.
Well, and no, we should survive. We gotta, and, and when I say trouble, just PR trouble.
I mean, just the citizens are all, you know, sort of upset because they never raised the water for like twenty years. Well, fell so far behind, now they're jumping twenty percent.
Yeah.
That's what's time.
That's what's happened here is nobody's looked at this for some time. Uh, we're, we're, you know, not trying to like make that huge jump, but we gotta figure out what's fair.
Yeah, it's a negative, you know, the four-five percent a year is easy to study.
Cost of living.
Yeah, twenty all at once is tough to study.
Yeah. I.
Because, how, you've lived here forever, Pam. How many rate increases have you seen?
I don't know. Well, since we've lived here.
Since two thousand, in two thousand, it was sixty bucks.
I feel like the first one was. Yeah.
Yeah, right.
When we first moved out here.
So in twenty-two years, it's jumped forty dollars.
Well, when we first moved out here, two thousand eleven, and it was sixty dollars a month. And so for that long, they hadn't.
They didn't move at all, yeah.
Yeah.
When I, when I moved into Bay Salt, it was sixteen bucks a month.
Because in the twenty years I've been here, I recall it going up, I think, thirty bucks a month.
It's been a lot.
And I think most of that was kind of like stacked on top of your dogs, yeah.
And it's, it's harder when you have to hit it. Like Garrett said, you're hitting every up all at once. It's like, whoa.
Well, we can just blame it on Larry.
Another question. Um, you guys said electricity's going up, so the well, all the water pumps are on electricity.
And so during the summer when people are watering, that bill gets really crazy.
Yeah, well, VFDs, so it does come up, the harmonics does come up and you use more power. You have a specific lower rate that's continuous, and then the harmonics brings it up to a higher rate, which bumps it maybe four or five hundred bucks rounds. But he said he's not getting pumps on the sewer system too. Alright, so they both go up.
Yes, we have to, so, so our water meters and our sewer have meters.
Uh, and then.
Meters are not read. Nobody knows where it's at.
And the other thing that, uh, I wanted to bring to the attention, we'll talk about utilities, is this last month, uh, somebody put out a question, like all the cities will put out a question, how much do you guys charge for? And this happened to be for hookups, okay, so not that we have a lot of new hookups, but it does happen and there might be one here soon. How long has it been since we've looked at that price? Because again, you can't overcharge, but you need to cover your bases. And since COVID, a lot of things have gone really high. So we charge a thousand dollars to hook into the system, right?
Is that water and sewer?
No, a thousand bucks for water, a thousand bucks for sewer.
Okay, so here is, most cities, it's closer to three thousand.
Well, it costs us about five hundred bucks, six hundred bucks for the can and the meter to hook in.
Okay, and how long has it been since you've looked at the prices? I'm just saying, like, let's look into it and how much is the lines for?
I haven't checked, not truly done it.
And how long?
Because almost all my pumps and stuff double.
Because I know in our business, a lot of things have gotten really expensive.
And keep in mind that your wages just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I mean, so then the people that are, are gonna, then did all that, the wages just went up.
We have to figure in your wages.
You have to figure in the cost of.
Your materials that you use, all that should be figured into the price.
Yeah.
All that's your overhead to get that put in there.
So Robbie, you said other cities do three thousand dollars?
Three thousand.
I, as a, as a citizen who's planning on maybe putting in a house for a boy or two over here in my.
Well, you better get on it right now.
I'm not, I'm saying, you know, you know what I'm saying is, I, as, as the, one who's looking at the future, go ahead and double it. I would suggest the hook. I would suggest the hookup be at least double what it is now. We're still a thousand dollars cheaper.
Well, we've gotta price out the parks, like, I mean, state of Idaho, you have to.
Yeah, but you need to calculate all the hours, everything.
And your labor and all of that, yes.
Rock, backhoe time, every single. Plus, if we don't do none of the backhoe hookup or nothing else, we don't do none of the digging. We make them hook up and top tap the line and everything else. It's just, we put in a can for it, and then I inspect it going up the house.
Okay. Your hookup fees are actually designed to be the cost of the new facility when your population grows to the extent that you need one. So for example, your hookup fees would then, when are you going to run out of water capacity? Well, your hookup fee ought to be big enough that when you run out of water capacity, you have the cash city there to drill the new well. At like a sewer class, say your sewer handle fifty more people, but now you're gonna have to have them do the good. Your hookup fee is supposed to be enough that when you run out of that fifty people, you can put in a good to do.
So that's some of that, well, true, I mean, that's.
Yeah. But like Blackwood's water hook fee, I think it's like sixty-seven now. But Shishen Associates puts out an annual review of everybody in the whole valley, of what their water sewer hookup fees and so forth. If you work in that, I've got an old one, but I don't, I, it's probably five years old, so it's useless. Um, you know, Paul Shis did a lot of work for you guys years ago. Yeah, provide you a copy of that.
That would basically give us something to go.
Yeah, it's just the whole valley. I mean, so you can look at size of towns and, you know.
That's a really good idea. I didn't know that.
Yeah, I guess you.
They'd very.
Take that money and put it in like the savings or.
That's the idea, so when, when the time comes that you have to drill a new well, you cash it in there.
So hookup fees then go into the new well value.
Yeah, exactly.
I build a new sub-account.
That's what, that's kind of, that's what that's designed to be.
That's good, that's a good one, Steve. It's really good to know.
Hopefully you never have to drill a new well. For me to drill one, you'd look in at sixty, eighty thousand, for anybody else, we're not a million.
For a new well?
You're calling it.
That's why Blackwood charges six thousand dollars a hookup.
Bay Salt's not really roaming either, you might get.
We have two wells.
You might get one or two or three houses in the next ten years, who knows? But it's not like.
Shorter people selling it.
It's not, it's not.
But there is already sewer issues, like with the lagoon, right?
Yep, with the lagoons, yep.
So we'll, we'll have to talk about.
I think the issue was last year with all the water that came down and filled over this. That was a bigger issue. That's why we had to drain the water. We had eleven and a half inches of water over the winter. We only had twenty-two inches of headboard, took out, let it just flow.
So I've got a question for the, for everybody. So we like to apply for grants, and usually you hire somebody to do that, and they get their grant approved, they get paid on that. Have you guys feel if Rob, Robin tries to work with getting certain grants and the city paying her for her time to do that?
Well, first I'd have to learn, which Robert Dial has told me he would help me get going.
So if we could have somebody from the city of FERC do that, compensate another wage.
It'd be for smaller ones, like you still have to have your grant writers, I think, for big ones. She's laughing, but she knows.
It, it could be a lot, but.
I already kind of said.
I, I would pay her more than her wage to run it. No, if you've never written a grant, you don't know what's a tell.
It's a pain in the patootie. I've, I've, I've written several federal grants and state grants, and.
That's why they charge them.
It's, 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 you, I put like three, four weeks into writing the grant, going through all the keywords they want to pop up. Because they will scan that, and they scan for keywords. And you don't have to put keywords in the right order.
And I'm more than happy to review for you. I will go over every inch of it, because I've done it for twenty years. I have no problem, but I will not write it very.
What if we pay to do that?
Nope.
It's that.
You have to run real fast, it'll offer me way more money than.
It was a thought, it was just a thought, so that the city of Bay Salt could put extra money in different.
I would love to see us get more grants, because there's a lot of that money out there, especially with, uh, holy gosh.
There's a ton of federal grant money.
What is the name of that grant that thing that just passed? We've all got money. I try to move in a bit. But it's for all, it's for infrastructure and everything, you can count.
I, I think there's plenty of money available, uh, so either we can hire somebody to do it, or see if she's capable of doing that. Maybe it might benefit city of Bay Salt to develop.
Yeah, they could check into, sometimes, um, counties or regions of the state will put on grant courses. And, you know, it's minimal charge, like twenty-five dollars for the person to go in and get some training and stuff, you know? I mean, that, that's the price in California, so it ought to be cheaper here.
Okay.
Yeah, Robin's more than capable of doing it, that's not a problem. It's just it's very, very involved. Because you.
It just, it, what, what that requires is more office time here, which will cost a little bit more money.
But depending on what grant you go for, you can also put your time into it. If it allows for that.
Well, I do want to talk to Robert about it, but I don't. We'll see.
It's just a thought.
I think it's a great idea. I, I think there's a ton of money out there sitting there that we aren't touching.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
Which aligned with me, how are we doing with our grant with?
And the organization for the county and cities that have.
So I got an email that said if we did it, we can still challenge that one, but there's no answer.
Writing new, worrying about stuff. I was thinking about.
For grant writing itself.
Grant money is the.
They might have something for that. I haven't seen one. Or so does the association of high cities.
Is there a cost share? Is there a cost share? Uh, I think there was.
Cities might do something like that. I haven't seen one, yeah, I haven't seen one, but that's not something I've been looking for.
But I did, I think I remember. That pricing now.
What, uh, you probably don't know the rest of the pricing.
It's.
It's okay.
So as we move forward, I think towards the spring and the next several years, the city maintenance shop needs a lot of work to kind of clean it up and fix it up, and so we can actually park things in it. Maybe try to update, upgrade some of the equipment as time goes on. Last year, there was, I don't know, what was it, fifty-seven thousand dollars or something, just in a chip sale on the road? Everything's got so expensive, and, and so I was just kind of curious, so I looked up online what it costs for something to go through and kind of seal all the cracks, fix the holes, all this sort of stuff, that we can do in-house. And I come across the deal where they gave you a whole package deal to do the sealing and pot hole repair. It was about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. And so a city maintenance guy could put that on the trailer, go around and fix the city streets in the summertime, spring, fall. Uh, that could be on the to-do list to keep a guy busy. Uh, and then we don't have to outsource that, we just keep it here. I think that would be something very beneficial for the city of Bay Salt.
I don't know, maybe even, because does FERC have their own?
I don't know.
Maybe they, Bay Salt Brian could go and do it there.
Can, can the city of Bay Salt subcontract like that?
To, to another entity, or government entity, absolutely. Joint Services Agreement is what they call it. So yeah, if you bought that piece of equipment and said, okay, for a hundred dollars an hour, we'll bring a guy and our equipment down, and you can buy the materials, absolutely can.
Okay, maybe that might work out. We're looking for ways to keep our people busy here, so we don't have to subcontract it. There are things that have to be done by a certified, uh, company, so we'll save that for the end, but things that we can do. I think that would benefit the people here. Uh, let's see. So to keep Brian busy, uh, spring, summer, fall, winter, uh, the city maintenance building needs a lot of stuff. We need to put in like a wellhouse and a generator, so we have to do something about that. And I think if we plan it right, then in the slow time of the winter, he could do like, we'll just say insulation in the city maintenance shop. He could slowly just kind of do that on his off.
And that's kind of a good time to work on equipment and stuff, to use it, need help.
So Brian says, I don't want to work on equipment, I'm not a mechanic, I'm not asking him to do that. Uh, but we want to make sure it's maintained, clean, ready to go, comfortable for the person driving it. We just got a seat for the tractor.
Made a difference, huh? He was like, no, it's fine.
Two hundred bucks. We got a, a, a nice seat for the student tractor. And I says, you want it heated? And he's like, no. And he just come over the other day.
First cold day.
We need to slow it down.
If we can make the job easier.
Question about winter slow time, plowing. When is it, is the street supposed to get plowed?
I don't know if there's the.
When he's got time.
When there's an inch.
So, well, let me tell you this. This is what I understand. This guy has a job that pays a lot of money to drill well.
Right.
And then he's got the city job that doesn't pay very much.
Right.
And so, yes, it snows, because it, when, when do we say, well, that should be plowed, or it's gonna just melt? So that's been kind of up to him, but with two of them now, I think it should just be taken care of.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that when you're plowing and there's a half an inch, your blade wear is like.
Really fast.
Really fast. So you almost need to have snow. Almost just throw them back.
Here's the other thing on that. Some, um, Caltrans has, instead of using blades, has the big broom on there. Because it's, and they just furrow it off, and they hit it, or they hit the roads as, as it's snowing, before it even has a chance to pack it. And they just blow them.
Maybe, maybe that's something we can look into in the future.
Yeah.
Uh, today we're not good.
That, that would be. Like that sweeper thing that they dump and sweep the streets. No, broil, no, not like that. I'm talking about a construction, basically instead of plowing the front, it's a big broom, three foot tall. And it goes, and they had to have it set so it just barely touches the, uh, the asphalt, but it has, it does the whip, whip and everything, and just.
You could donate it.
If I, if I find that winning lottery ticket for the main money inside the well.
I thought you were rich.
That's, that's part of, that's part of grant money, and so I think we can find a way to get some grants, we can improve the equipment that we have.
Department of Transportation has grants and stuff like that.
So we'll look into that, I think.
And as far as plowing goes, I found that it's really dangerous to plow during the middle of the day when everybody's out moving around. That's why I usually plow when I plow at four o'clock, three or four o'clock in the morning till eight, till seven thirty, eight o'clock. Because there's very few people out there, and we're making very few problems. If I get later on, you don't know how many people are right there on the top of your, your blade. You hit the bricks and they're almost hitting you constantly. It's like dangerous. You know, if it's really bad weather and you got big drips, and yeah, I'm out there working on it, but if, if I can at all help it, I will not plow during the daytime when everybody's near you. That's why it's been my thing for years.
I don't know. I'm, I'm an outsider. I'm from Shelley. And I know, I'll openly admit it, that when I first come here, I, the first thing I thought was, where's the sidewalks? Where's the gutters? And I was told very clear, and I'm, I'm a resident here now, and I firmly believe it, if you want gutters and you want sidewalks, go to Shelley. If you want fair, clean roads, you're not gonna find them. Go to Shelley. But if, if you want.
Even the nano policy doesn't.
Most of us have grown up here, we know the roads. They do, guy does a fantastic job, these roads. I've never seen a better. And like I say, I've been here twenty-four years now. I, I've never seen a better.
It used to be dirt roads, right?
What's that?
They used to be dirt roads.
Yeah, most of these roads were, and it was a water project that they budgeted for asphalt, and they never got it.
Yeah.
Never got it. And so ended, ended up the county came in and just dumped a bunch of gravel, covered it with tar, and called it good.
So something else I.
So our roads aren't, our roads aren't really roads. They're, they're gravel. Just so you know. Yeah, so you have to be, you have to be a little more gentle with them than just an asphalt road.
If it's soft, if it's soft in the fall, you won't see me out plowing because I don't want to rip through it. If it's in the spring, I won't, I'll be really careful about my blades barely touching the road because I'm afraid of ripping the road. You see me the last couple of years, I've been out there with my little tractor cleaning, you know, around my, my corner out there. But that tractor acted up and I couldn't get it started. I couldn't get it into the shop to stay warm, and, uh, doesn't have a block heater, so it ain't gonna be starting till the spring.
One last thing I think I want to try to do is, uh, do a Bay Salt beautification. So all the city rightways along the road, we're gonna ask that people clean them up, and I have a few minutes for that, and so if there's old car that broke down on the city rightway, we're gonna ask that they move them on the property. We're gonna try to do some things to clean up. I'm, I'm willing to volunteer a lot of my time, my resources to help do this. And so there's actually quite a few people in Bay Salt that are willing to volunteer to help do these things at their own pre-will with no pay. And so I think it would be a good thing. So asking anybody to go through and, you know, you need to clean up.
Clean their yard, just the easement.
It's, it's just easements, you can see where the town where it is. So we want to make sure that it's nice. So as, as you come into Bay Salt from this way, the first house you see on the right-hand side coming in is old, broken-down fence, a couple trees that have been cut down for a long time. So we'll talk to the owners. We'll go on a little bit, see if we can come in and do a service project, clean this up.
Extra neighbors move the trees.
So I'm happy to go and help do that, just to fit my time, and so there's a lot of neighbors that are willing to do that. So, uh, later, some other meeting, we'll talk about budgets and how we can move some money around to see if we can do some stuff and, and then kind of clean it up around here a little bit. So, got a lot of resources available to help out with that. So anyways.
Where do you get that?
I'll put calls out later. I'm not gonna tell you clean your yard, just the easement.
Just easement.
She wants it cleaned up.
Oh, well, we, we have a skister, we can just everything.
Nobody heard that. Don't go telling Matt on me.
Well, Gil's gonna post it.
So if neighbors, if neighbors in Bay Salt already have talked to a couple, there's one down here. Uh, they were thinking about putting a fence on, like, let's put up a fence this next summer, if you guys will, take the cost of the building materials, we already have volunteers to come in. I can drill holes with my sister, I can pour concrete with the posts, neighbors, we can put all together, we'll.
And not with city money.
Not with city money, right. So, uh, but the rightaway, if there's weeds there, I'd like to try to clean that up and put a road base there. If it's in front of somebody's house, if they're willing to mow it, we'll take care of that and plant grass. Kind of like you guys have and what Dwayne has, it's grass to the street. So if it's weeds and rocks and they're willing to mow it, then we'll clean up the city rightaway part, plant grass, and then they can mow it, and that'll help with the city maintenance job too. They're not having to mow the weeds and whatever, so I do think quite a few people are excited about that around here, I think.
Just as a, as a purity gear lawyer, how does that do for liability as the city? Is there, is there any problems with?
No, it happens everywhere. It's like Aberdeen, for example, their, their rightaways are eighty feet, or they use thirty of them. And then, you know, the, so the city has the same liability as, as it would be out the street and stuff, but I don't think it increases enough. I think the beautification is more important.
I think the rightaway's sixty-four feet, I think.
Here, yeah, they say Aberdeen's, you know, you probably still, and you guys probably only use about thirty of it. Aberdeen's eighty feet.
But I mean, so like if we offer the, the women help, not as a city, but.
Yeah, so I mean, you're, so.
Actually, the city has its.
Well, it's a small community, that's obvious, but, you know, your rightaway, obviously your city crews can go in and do it, no questions asked, right? And so we clean up and stuff like that, I think would be huge. But, you know, now your service projects are your neighbors and your volunteers.
And we've got neighbors, we have your neighbor Kurt Weiser, kind of talking to him about it, and he's like.
He's ready to go.
He's ready to go. He's like, I'll even bring the barbecue, and we'll do hot dog. I'm like, yeah, we'll do that. We're, we're gonna, absolutely. There's a lot of people that are very interested in that. And so we're not telling anybody to clean their yards, we're just saying, city. And so we're not telling anybody to clean their yards, we're just saying, city rightaway, if you want a fence, there's people that are willing to come in. At, as a service project, if the individual will fund their own fencing materials. And so I, I've got a couple of skisters, I've got access to all the things, and so we can do this. So if I feel like I wanna donate to a neighbor over there, I'll do that, so that's, that's something I'm looking forward to.
And the only thing, you know, when you're using your private equipment, obviously that's a service project.
Service project.
The only issue, you can't use city equipment on a private property.
Yeah, right.
And I assume if it's on private property, then the liability is the homeowner, if somebody starts to get hurt. It's, okay, I, I could just run it through my line.
Cause that was a service project.
So, so if, if there's weeds in front of somebody's house, we wanna clean that up, we give them the decision, what do you want? Want grass, want road base, what do you wanna do? And they'll tell us and then we'll accommodate that, and the city will do their part. But if they say, what do you think about fence? Okay, let me call some people that wanna donate their time, and we'll come over and do that. So the city will not be involved with the fencing projects or anything like that. It'll be the individuals and the people that wanna sort of volunteer for that. So, yep. I think it'll, it'll be a good thing. Any other thoughts? That's all I wanna talk about tonight.
Speaking of both the meeting. Totally, so he has some option, right?
You don't have to, some do, some don't.
I think, or, or your.
All in favor? All in favor? Let's get out of here.